You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Swansea.
We'll continue. The agenda for this evening is mainly just discussions and other business. Item A would be TC Legacy, and we're discussing a multi-tenant in that site plan. Item B is North Swansea rezoning discussion. Item C is zoning amendments discussion in general. D, plan reading workshop, which we're probably going to be doing. And other business that may be required, that would be planning board representative for CI PC. So, there's nothing on our agenda, so we don't even need a motion for regional impact there. We probably will if we get discussing this zoning at a public hearing, because the board is keen on it, but tonight we're just preliminarily discussing it. Let's see, and so we have to review the minutes and approve the minutes of July 13th. So, does anyone have any...
Page two.
Page two, let's go.
Please make a motion to approve in a second and then discuss the changes. I'm sorry, that's the way I need to do it.
Want it that way? Okay.
Yeah.
So, then, we need a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Jane, seconded by Richard Lane.
And then there was discussion.
Now, is there any further discussion here?
Exactly.
Just on page two.
Okay.
Under the paragraph of public hearing, right after the line where it says on sheet nine and 10, the next words, "he they have secured," what does that mean?
I'm sorry, it says what?
He, they, have secured. What should that...
I have to look at it.
It'd have to be they.
Should we just drop the he out of there?
Yeah.
Or when they...
Yeah, they have secured.
Is it when they have...
Yes, it was supposed to be they.
Okay, so it's not when...
It's a typo. No, it's just a typo.
Anybody else have any amendments? Then, all those in favor of approving the minutes within the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I mean, I can't, with all those of votes, then they are approved, all abstained.
Okay.
Next, that brings us to the first item, which is TC Legacy, and that is a multi-tenant. And the planning board needs to take a look and decide whether they need a full-blown site plan review or being a multi-tenant and an expansion of an existing use in there if they do not. So, that's the first order of business for the planning board to decide whether we want them to come in. Review it, what they're doing here, right there, they're adding a, I guess it's a large truck parts type of a business in there. And they have other auto businesses in there, which I have for quite some time. And it's a multi-tenant, they're going in, I think, Suite A of Building Two, I think it is.
Well, that's the building.
That's that new one, yeah, closest to where you're turning there. So, in my opinion, they don't need a site plan review, because again, it's just like an existing business in there. And we're going to be seeing them pretty soon anyways for a full-blown site plan review, as soon as they get a drawing. But, just being a multi-tenant, we can decide whether or not we want to...
I'm just a little confused. If you go to the layout here, is this what they're proposing to add? Or, because if you go to their schematic of A, B, C, D, and F, it doesn't show any sort of...
Well, this particular item right here, they aren't adding anything. They're going for a multi-tenant in that slot right there, in that building number two. They aren't talking about adding anything on there. We did approve that little addition under that little one right there.
But I don't think that this is that.
It might not be, but again, that's the, I don't know, the assessors' cards sometimes are correct, sometimes they're not. But I don't know that we should be going by that. We should be going by just what they presented to us with their application there. And I noticed that too, it was a little bit off, but it was a little bit odd, it was not the entire site plan. They have a couple of different assessing cards in here. But they do have the aerial view of it, and we can see that, see what's going. So, the question is, do we want them to come in for a site plan review? Or not? Yes or no? Motion one way or the other. Okay, let's have a vote for that. Okay, a motion by Michael York, that they do not have to come in for a site plan review for a particular modification. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brandon Self. Is there any further discussion? Then, all those in favor indicate a saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, that's out of the way, so now we can do this right at this meeting, right here, it's on the agenda.
So, all are in favor, did anybody not vote? I'm going to abstain until we discuss it further. And I didn't hear your vote.
No. I'm not sure what to read.
Me either, I want to talk about it.
Do we need to go back or have another motion? We had a motion, we voted on it, so we have to...
It would be three, two.
Well, okay.
Okay, three, two.
Yes, I got that then.
Okay, so now, your concerns.
Well, I think all of this is new, isn't it? Number two?
Number two is fairly new, it's approved by us, but it...
It's a new building.
It is, it's new, not to this particular...
It's built in 2020, I believe.
Yes, so three years ago.
It's currently built in 2020.
Did we see a site plan then?
We did.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was questioning.
Basically, the same thing, there are, you know.
But yeah, we have seen that building, we did approve it.
Okay.
Richard, you guys want to...
I just, I just want to reread what they're doing here. I mean, I'm sorry I didn't do this prior to...
Quite all right. Twenty a time. Anybody else? We'll discuss. Mike Gassman, go first.
When Mr. Chapman initially proposed the structures, was one of the uses that he had brought to the board is a probable, potential, potential probable use.
Of this particular use, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Of this one that we're talking about now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The applicant, would you, nothing to add? Okay.
May I comment?
So, let me just...
Can I comment?
Someone on the...
Victoria, I think.
Victoria.
Oh, okay. Yeah, let's hear it.
Watching my cow, not have a calf yet. I'm not understanding that the application calls for auto parts and accessories, but also customer repair and design for heavy trucks, which implies, you know, like, they're going to store trucks, heavy trucks that they're working on. And I would expect that to be designated on this site plan, because I think that the issue that I see on that lot to begin with is everybody looks great except here's this random miscellaneous collection of heavy equipment, just as you drive into the lot, right?
Yep, okay.
So, that's a concern.
Okay, that's a good question. Could you answer that?
I can answer that.
Just a moment, just a moment.
I could not hear Victoria until the very end. Could you just repeat for me what her concern is?
Victoria's concerned that they're going to be storing heavy trucks on there while they're working on them, before they're working on them or while they're working on them.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Okay, so I can address this. My name is Jennifer Shabbitt.
I'm sorry, the name?
Jennifer Shabbitt.
Okay.
And this is actually going to be a second garage for them, and this is sort of his finished space. He'll typically only have one truck at a time, and this is where his clients are going to come and receive the reveal. Right, he may, you know, be working on one at a time there. He can have another garage in a different town. He wanted to have a clean, nice, presentable space for this, like, finished detail. Then his clients will come and see their... So, it's, there is no intention of there being piles of trucks.
Yep, mainly one vehicle at a time. Let me just go down the application here. It's so industrial. Let's see, and it's auto parts and accessories, custom repair and design for heavy trucks, which is what he said. And it's going to be Building One Unit A, is that Building One Unit A or is it Building Two Unit A? Building Two Unit A?
The layout numbers have changed.
All have changed?
Changed up with the addresses changing and then, I mean, evens on the institute.
Okay, and let me just clarify, we're talking about that right there, right? Okay, thank you, thank you.
It doesn't feel logical to call it two, because it's the first building when you come in, but given the way that roads are typically even on one side and on the other, it becomes two.
Okay, thank you. And let's see, okay, Building Two A. And the hours are Monday through Friday, hours eight to five, occasional weekends as needed. And full-time employees, he says zero. I would assume that it's just going to be the owner working there. So, actually, that would be one employee, I would say, so it'll be him. Let's see, customers per day is zero to one. So, that would, that was a question I had, you know, how are you going to run a business at zero to one? You know, customers coming in per day, but that's what it is. They're bringing it from another location and finishing it there. I understand now, thank you. Parking spaces planned, and we've got two at the building and three in auxiliary area if needed. Deliveries, UPS is many as two times per week. And no additional outside lighting to be added to the existing building. And permits require, he has his license Class A down there, I know, but I don't know if he needs that. We're working there. And I'm talking about the signage, and that's really handled administratively by the land use office, but it'll be a small piece, a small sign, and the main sign is on there by the looks. Okay, that's the... And Victoria, you're still on with us, correct?
Me am, yeah.
Did that, did the answer satisfy your questions on that? You know, about the storage...
I guess, well, I guess I hope when we see the complete site plan that we'll have designated parking for these different businesses.
Yep, yep, that's true, and they will be coming in with a complete site plan. I don't know what the holdup is, they're, I guess, busy.
It's being worked on.
Okay, being worked on.
They've been on-site, they've done the measurements, the, and so on and so forth, and so it's now in their office and they're skating.
Okay, so yeah, when the planning board looks at that, that'll probably be one of the things they're looking at.
Do we have an estimated time of arrival for that whole, that complete site plan?
No, I guess not. We don't have that for our site plans that we are getting back, or the modified site plans either. I don't know, I guess they're all busy or something. But, when it comes back in, they intend to do other things there, so it's to their advantage to come in and get it to us as soon as possible. Mike Gassman?
Even once we receive the done site plan, which I've talked to Chad, I know he is working on, this area did get site plan review, and it is going to be isolated to the space that got that review? So, even once we get the new overall site plan, this space is still going to be, I'll call it isolated just because of the way the road and everything runs around, rounds it anyway.
Do you mean it won't be on the site plan ever again?
No, it will be, it will be, but I mean, it's still going to be, what it is now is what it would be then. And that, this space was actually probably the most viewed portion of this property that the client Mr. Chapman built it. It did get site plan review, this section of the property. So, it was, it wasn't what we're normal, what we normally see, that's true, but it was done to the plan and it will remain the same even with the plan, I'm pretty confident that. Because of the way the road goes and everything else, it may have a little bit of change put in it now that it doesn't, that it doesn't now, maybe. But it's pretty much, that section of the property isn't really going to change much at all. It really don't use support to either. But it will be incorporated absolutely.
Okay, great.
That is accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, excuse me. The current building, does that have all of the fire prevention things that are mentioned under this applicable ordinance and regulations? Being the firewalls, the fire, the smoke detectors, et cetera?
Eric and I were wanting to make sure it gets whatever it needs. That building is, it's a big building, it depends on how it did these up, it depends on how, where, when, when. So, like any other multi-tenant application, whether it gets, whether reviews it, gets there, and I still will go in and still check it out no matter what. So, we will be going in there, once you guys say whatever you decide.
So, that can be a condition, fire and inspector.
Right.
Any other discussion for the discussion on this? No? Okay, anybody from the public discussing this? No? Then I guess a motion would be in order to approve the multi-tenant application with the condition that it's inspected by the fire department and approved, and by the building inspector.
So, move again.
Motion by Michael York for that.
So, yeah, I'm a little confused. So, you already have a motion that you passed, three to two.
That motion was that they did not have to come for a full site plan.
Okay, now this one is...
This is a motion to approve the multi-tenant.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
With those two conditions.
Yes, the two conditions.
And, see, by Michael York, that was seconded by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion? No, all those in favor indicate a saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, you're set.
Thank you.
We hope to see you pretty soon with that full-blown site plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item up is North Swansea rezoning discussion. Assuming everyone is here, are you coming to make a presentation? Good.
Well, maybe a presentation, more discussion. Can I have a second, please, clear?
You can come right up. Just identify yourself for the minutes and talk louder enough so we can all...
I know Mark.
Well, you do know...
I do know Mark.
Mark Slaughter? Let me just... So, I'm guessing everybody's got their package?
I think so.
So, I think it's, you know, fairly clear what we're looking to propose to you. We're hoping it's amenable to what people really want, and that would be to have this business that should actually be a residential district. We figure as a compromise that who owns the building, can, is can be the creation of the Village Three, Village Village Three District, or modifying Business District One to be more intuitive of what we have here, would be acceptable to us, right? So, like I said, we're looking, you know, to make something that was hopefully amenable and something that we more here we embrace and take into account more going forward. You know, through the course of years, what we've gone through with projects out there, and certainly there's another group of people that are currently confronted with Sullivan Way and the eighteen-unit proposal later that we'll be making to the board in the future. There's a lot of people that are upset in that part of the town. So, through the course of these deliberations, I heard from most everybody on the board, not everybody, that, you know, they were saying against the under-re project, but we have to follow our rules and regulations in our zoning. And so, we're looking to remedy that, and hopefully this, you guys will be supporting this. So, I hand that out as really a rationale for this, how we're looking at it. Also in there is the delta of what's different from the Village Business District One versus what we're proposing here. I can read through it, but I can read through this as well. I think maybe we'll just start with questions, that's what we do.
Yeah, sure. Personally, you know, I think it's something that you should do, because zoning, of course, you know, that area up there is quite residential, for sure. I have a few questions on it. Now, this is what we've got that the rezoning would be, what we're talking about. You have a copy of that, do you, or you don't have a copy? There's one right by you there.
No, I have that.
And... There's one right next to you, underneath that, there's the whole town zoning, district by district.
And, one question, I don't know about question, but just a statement I have about it, is leaving that little piece right there as a fragmented piece of the zone down inside of the regular business zone, it's not really good zoning to do that. Why specifically is that one there, did you have?
The, what we have there, and actually a little beyond that, I think...
You're going to this far down as power?
Yeah, so everything that's down to where that contiguous business district ends here are fairly well-established businesses already.
And we're talking about down to here?
Well, we're contiguous, and then it's just a little bit down there, right? There's no real rhyme or reason to, that's where we ended over, then we need to make some delineation, okay? Even here, we have established businesses already. You know, those are not our concern, our concern are, you know, people coming into...
Closer to the residents, right, closer in here.
Yeah, but I mean, but this is also, you know, it's also the part around Los Incan, right? That we're trying to preserve. So, I mean, if that delineation interrupts a business district, it's part of the city without this map, you know, I would say continue with, continue with down to the end of that business district.
Continue this, just take a look, straight down to that you're talking about, right?
Just a little bit further beyond that.
Oh, beyond page four?
Yeah, just a little bit beyond, beyond that.
That would be Frasier.
Oh, right to Frasier.
Power generator.
Right to there.
Right, right to the end of that, so, yeah, we've even seen that, how we would look at it, breaking it up. Yeah, we're just, you know...
So, that would include Frasier's, is what we're talking about? Would include Frasier's?
Frasier's, I think, to the storage place there.
Yeah, all the storage there.
I mean, they're already established, they're grandfathering, you know, it's still be a, right?
So, let's see...
So, the only business district really left on thirty-two is where, you know, I mean, web and that area, right?
So, when we look at zoning, it's got to be fair. You know, we've talked about that before, it's got to be fair. And what you're doing with zoning is that you're trying to make it fair and livable, everyone being able to enjoy their property, private property that they can. And when you, when you zone with further restrictions, it's like, it's a taking of the property. You know, it can be considered that, which it actually is a taking of property. It's, you know, these people own their property, those people own their property. They might want to put a store there, these others don't. And, you know, they pay taxes, and it's a right we're taking from the property. So, we have to weigh those too while we're looking at this. Now, I'm not talking about this being against what you guys are proposing. I'm just pointing out that that's how we look at it here. We have to, it's got to be fair. So, in saying that, also looking at what the proposal, the idea to incorporate it into a business district or Village Business District One, I think is a good idea. You don't have it there, we have a copy of the zoning map here, and Business District One is here in West Swansea, and it's...
It's four, it's four sections.
Yeah, it's, well, it's, yeah, small sections there, Main Street here, going down Winchester Street, and that on there.
Over here, and so on.
Yep, so...
And once again, those are all pretty well-established, I think, in terms of...
There's a lot of residences down there, as is up here, you know, you're talking about North Swansea. So, you know, if, if we did do that, I think that we could take some of the uses out of Business, Village Business District One, the ones that you have not included into your proposal, without, without really taking too much. Again, it's a taking of somewhat that, that the property owner won't be able to, to use his property or to do those things with the property all at once. But then, the zoning goes down to a half acre and a hundred foot frontage, which is a giving right there. You know, you've got a piece of property, you might be able to get two lots out of it, or two things out of it, rather than one. If you're, because this, this is dropping down the zoning. And business, it's one acre and a hundred and fifty feet, I believe?
Yeah.
All right, you know, one fifty, yeah, one fifty. So, now, you're proposing in this Village Business District, which it is there too, the half acre size and the hundred foot frontage, which is a given, in my opinion. You know, it's give and take type of a thing. But, getting back to, I just want to go over some of the things that, that we could leave out, so...
Can I ask a question?
Go right in, yeah. Discussion, jump right in.
Why would you want to take an area that is ninety percent or better residential and create a business district?
It is a business, what you're calling it is a business district.
If you want to change something to protect your property and the individual, which is, I believe is what I'm hearing, especially after the plan view project, why would you open the door to create more businesses that are going to possibly be unsightly into your neighborhood? Now, Mike, you know, because it is within your, or within the reality or the preview of the town to change that or keep it as a residential, grandfathering any business like the veterinary clinic, any other small, in, at-home business that is there. But you're protecting all the other people that have invested money into their homes in that area. If you change it to a business area, looking at what you've got listed here for potential businesses coming in, you're going to be coming back and screaming at the planning board, "Why are we allowing this unsightly business to come back in, or to come into our neighborhood?" And, one other thing, if a business should go out, say the veterinary clinic closes down, they have two years with which to do something with the building, to make another business or something. After that two years, then it goes out of a business situation and goes back into whatever you've zoned into that area.
I think you're suggesting that this should be a residential area.
That is what I'm suggesting, I mean...
It is not a residential area now, you do know that, right?
I know that that's not what it's zoned for, but I know...
It's densely populated with a lot of single, and a few multi-family homes, but all of this right now that you're seeing in blue is a business district.
Correct.
So, you know, that, that to us is a bigger risk than replying that to a more refined or controlled business district. Certainly, our preference would be to have this be residential, absolutely. And if the board thinks that that would go through, I would propose that. That would be, that would be walking down here with a home running.
No, having, having grown up in that area and going back, you know, a great number of years, that the character of that area is residential, and it always has been. There've been a couple of mom-and-pop operations in there. Wilbur Brothers Supermarket started on that, in that area. But, it has long since changed and become residential. All of these small mom-and-pop operations have become residential. And I just, I don't see the rationale of, you know, of going away from the potential of keeping that as a residential or suggesting a zoning change to a residential situation.
Would you make a motion? We have to figure out about that bit more.
You can't, his rationale is that it's business now, and it's, a lot more is allowed in that business.
Oh, I understand that.
And, and the other rationale is what I was talking about before, is that when you change it from business back to residential or to residential, you're actually taking some of those people's property rights that owned the businesses there and diminishing them, you know, which diminishes the value of their property. We're doing that and doing this.
But what is the master plan guideline to maintain the character of the Town of Swansea?
It is.
Okay, so if the character of that area is residential, even though it is zoned, and why it was zoned business back then, I can, you know, I have an answer.
Maybe just because it was thirty-two. I think maybe just because the airport was thirty-two.
Yeah. You know, why we would change the character, or potentially change the character of the area?
Well, the planning board certainly can propose that, that whole thing down there be changed to residential. But I'm not so certain it would go through just because of taking the rights away from the business owners along there.
When you say it wouldn't go through, are you saying that the town would vote it down if we put it on a ballot? Or are you saying that the planning board wouldn't?
Oh, no, well, the planning board may, may say no, but they can still put on with petition.
Correct.
So, I'm, I'm saying it's, go ahead.
It, on the other hand, if it's a business zone, that sometimes deteriorates the value of the property of the residential owners as well. So, it's a twenty-two.
They're already there.
Is there a way to... Lower than, than what they're saying? The area that they've, they've got on their map, the only place that I see a business per se is Whitcombe's.
Oh, up here, way up here.
Yes, on the right-hand side. There are apartment buildings, that's multi, you know, multi-tenant. But still, it's, you know, it's business, it's multi-tenant, but it's residential too.
We've run into a, just a, I don't know if you'd call it a situation, but where we've... We've run into a, just a, I don't know if you'd call it a situation, but where we've went to, you know, most recently, I think, went to rezone to a different zone, I think maybe back to residential, and the people didn't want it. They wanted that staying commercial because it made their property more valuable.
You're talking about Fenton?
I think it...
Yeah.
The Cross.
Flat roof, middle of the...
Well, no one showed, no one showed up.
Also Jim Devine's right there across from Fenton's too.
I'm just bringing that up because that does happen, that's a concern of the people, that sometimes they want it to remain, even though they've got a house on it, they want it to remain commercial or, or business because it's more valuable as that kind of a lot. It's, again, it's the private property rights, you know, with the person...
Now, is it possible to train a residential, give a grandfathering to the existing businesses?
Absolutely.
It is.
But what he's saying...
But again...
I know what he's saying, but that was another question.
Those, it's all possible, anything is possible, whether the voters who go along with it or not, or the planning boards supports it or not, who knows? But that's all possible to do. But again, you don't know if the property owners...
Yeah, I take your point because like a Jim Devine situation where he didn't want that changed from business to residential.
Yeah.
He may, being a seller now, he may do something with that property.
That's right.
And as high as value would be is a commercial property.
However...
I think the residents feel threatened.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and they...
By the businesses, right?
Do at least so...
They have no control over what comes in there, we've seen that happen. That's why you're gonna see twenty people come in with silver, right? A whole different pattern than thirty people that came in for Adam, right? These are all people that live in that area. Those are the ones that wish to participate, you know the participation level in this town is pretty low, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, this is a unique situation, I'm sorry.
It's okay. The property that Michael mentions is right on Route twelve.
Correct.
That makes a big difference too. These down on thirty-two and a lot of them really close to Wilson Pond, which is an, an area where, when you put in a business, there's a lot of question, or like the large multifamily we've talked about, there's a lot of question about the runoff and what the business would be doing if it's, you know, if it's a business that uses oils and pollutants. So, I, and the businesses, businesses that are there now are pretty clean-cut and not bothering anybody. But I, I don't really see that if I were a resident there, I'd feel, I'd feel that you were making my property more valuable as a residence by prohibiting businesses, rather than having people get an exception or, and, you know, being allowed to put in a business that maybe I wouldn't want in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
So, I, I think that makes your property more value, valuable if you can't be infringed upon.
Yeah, the whole thing is... It's a balance and it's a give and take, you know, zoning is give and take, we were talking about that before.
Hey Scott?
Yes, I didn't see, I'm sorry.
As Julius and I are kinda like, in another weekend, we'll be sort of quasi-planning things. I was actually work, looking with a, a real estate agent regarding the only Village One district property that exists on Summer Street. It's one lot.
Yeah.
Kind of an oddity. I'm not sure how that happened or why, but it is. And as I was looking at what was allowed, I was a little bit surprised because I thought, well, these on Summer Street, some of these might be, this might be a lot, this might be a little different. We're actually talking about another property, we're talking about that one. But he was curious what the blue meant, so we're discussing the blue, that's surrounded by residential, you know, otherwise. And is there any value in looking at what's allowed in, in this process in Village District One period?
There is.
You're allowing to change that.
In, in a, in regards to what we're doing now, or I mean, as a separate issue, what do you, what do we...
Well, I mean, kind of, I mean, this is an interesting kind of exercise, right? We've got one that exists and we've got one that's a weird...
Yeah, no, I think it bears produce, I would say, to look at a business district one, 'cause a lot of that stuff in there, we should go through them. You wouldn't be able to put, or shouldn't anyways, be able to put where that business...
No, I could imagine, I could imagine the cost of six can be you.
No, you couldn't do it, so, and with a lot of those things eliminated from there, it pretty much comes up to what they're proposing.
What they're going to.
Yes, yeah.
I agree.
So, in District One, they'd, you know, there's a single-family dwelling, a restaurant is allowed. We'd be taking out hotel motel and they'd still be allowing a bed and breakfast facility. And professional business offices would be allowed. Club or lodge would not be, taking that out. Retail business establishment allowed, personal service shop or service establishment allowed, banking or financial institution allowed, a removing nursing home, and those are, let's see, home occupation is allowed in most of many ways. And that's all for the allowable uses. Now, for the special exception one, we're taking a lot of that stuff out. It would be allowing, let's see, recreational facility conducted as a business, only when such business activity is conducted indoors, and a daycare facility, the rest would be removed, and that would be gasoline service stations, repair garage or body shop, motor vehicle dealership, wholesale or manufacturing facility, vehicle wash facility, uh, let's see, and that would be it. So, that would be, with those removed, that would be the Business District Three that is being proposed.
I would add a bed count and a bed and breakfast.
You'd add a what, bed count?
I would add a bed count and a bed and breakfast.
Yeah, there would be a Vill, Vill, Village District Three, then it wouldn't affect the one over here. Correct? Because what you do there, you don't want...
Well, what we're talking about is not, we're proposing not to do a separate Business District Three. We have a Business District One, Two, and Three, and a regular Business District. Instead of piling on ordinance after ordinance like that, how about combining these two? We suggested that we should, and, and I think it's a good idea, combine Business District One, Village Business District One, removing those uses there, and it would apply to where it already exists down here, and it would apply, apply to where these guys are proposing it up there. And it would be those limited uses which are not, you know, you probably wouldn't wanna see them next door to your house. But again, it's not as bad as what we just put in up there.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah.
And this is what these guys are trying to get ahead of, and it's a good thing that you do that, that's, that's how it works. Is that we do it? So, there's also the density part of it there. Let's see, we're in Business District, Village Business District One, uh, the density is eight units per acre for multifamily dwelling. So, in, in this one is proposed, I think it's down to... Is it six? Yeah, it's down to six, and let me just get my page here.
So that's where I've connected to...
Still, I've gone beyond, I'm going there. So, it's eight in Village, yeah, Village Business One. So if we brought that down to six, let's see, it's three in residential zone and it's twelve in business zone. So twelve to go in there now. If it's, if we reduce the Business District One down to the six that these guys are talking about, I don't think that would be objectionable to anybody, I don't know. Take a look at the properties around those and you probably wouldn't even be able, be able to get the six units in there because...
How many lots do we have that are even an acre?
Well, you'd need, to get the six units in there, you'd need about three and a half acres on the lot to do it. So, I don't know if you'd find too many lots like that around anyways that they could put on. And besides that, we allow the higher density in other areas of town.
I think not.
And another thing about that density requirement with the, with the sewer, this part probably not get another big multi-housing unit down in here in West Swansea because that system is pretty much a capacity with the phosphorus removal that it has and with the upcoming requirements of the EPA they're putting on this plant down here. So, we probably figure that that's probably not gonna happen down here. They need a sewer system, they can get water, but they need a sewer system to put up multifamily like that. So we can figure that if it's going in town, again, it's going down where you guys are, because that's where all the sewer is. That entire road from, it's almost the Keen line anyway, just about the Keen line, all the way down through there is sewer. And that goes to the Keen wastewater treatment plant. The town of Swansea has about two-hundred-and-sixty thousand gallons worth of capacity or reserved capacity at that plant. We're currently putting in about thirty-five thousand a day. So there's a huge capacity that Swansea could put in there. Again, I'm just bringing this down to point out, you know, the possibility to zone it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
None of the multifamily units in this district are eight families?
I don't know, I don't know.
You wouldn't want to outlaw a, a, a business that has, I mean, a residential dwelling that has eight units? If it already exists?
But it'd be grandfathered in.
Oh, okay.
You know, just to make the zoning more fitting of the neighborhoods.
Would that still count if the person sold the building and say it had sixteen apartments grandfathered in, but that person sold the building to somebody else, would that still be grandfathered in?
It goes with the property and not with the owner. All that stuff, special exceptions and variances go with the property, not with the owner, so...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is a question for Mark, and I'm wondering about the boundary. It would be the eastern boundary that is north of Park Street. And there are quite a few small lots that are not included in this proposed district. I wonder what you're thinking about excluding them.
Well, only the ones that are shaded are in the Business District. The other ones are actually in a residential district.
Okay, okay, please.
So let's see, I saw you looking at the density, was I right about that or, or you're...
I, it's one of those funny things where it says, "Density requirement shall be one acre for the first dwelling unit, a half acre for each additional unless connected to public sewer." And then, that kind of cancels that out, so they would need three and a half acres if it was septic.
If, yeah.
For multifamily, so if they were to do that in the existing Village One, when it was reduced to six units per acres, per acre, they would need three and a half acres. But in North Swansea, they would not need that much.
No, the whole thing is sewered, that's kind of a moot point right there.
Exactly, so they could put six on an acre.
Six, yeah, and that's what's proposed, six.
Yep.
And if we, again, if we change that, Village Business One down to six, which would incorporate down here, it'd be the same, same thing. Again, there's small lots down here, you wouldn't get, you might get one lot, three acres down there, but that's about it.
I think there's, there are two properties in Village One that meet that, and one of them will be redeveloped. The other one already has a multifamily housing project on it.
All right, so, yeah, I think in Winchester Street, somewhere in Winchester Street, is that where it is you're talking about or no? Oh, no, I guess not, no, that doesn't go that far.
Um, I'm thinking of the housing that's like right across the street from us.
Right there.
I think that's in Village One.
What's that all about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that's...
Uh, one other thing on that, see, I noticed you didn't allow religious facilities as a use, but there's one there, you know. Is that oversight or is that on purpose or...
I don't think by state law you can stop a religious house going in, who is a recognized religion.
Really? I don't know, even if it's not an allowable use?
It's not.
It's a law that was passed last summer.
Oh, was it? Okay, so, that's out, I mean, they can go in there if they want, it's possible, again, let's see, so... And another question I had on, on the allowable uses is a drive-through, would that be considered up there? Had you considered that? I'm just running down these things before, so we can discuss it all.
That was, that was not considered.
No, and what would you have thoughts on something like that?
Do you drive through, consider it something different, any restaurant?
Uh, it's like, like the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through, those types of things. Not, you're not proposing that at all, yeah.
I'm sure you don't want it up here in Village District One either.
And in, in the zoning in general, we don't talk about duplexes too much as far as, let's see, two-family dwelling? Yeah, you've got two-family dwelling, density requirement for two-family dwelling shall be one and a half acre unless connected to public sewer. So we don't say what the minimum lot size is for, if it's connected to a public sewer, so for a duplex. So it probably would boil down to the minimum lot size, which is a half an acre, which is proposed here, I would say, if it was connected to a public sewer. And again, a duplex isn't that big of a deal, right? It's about the same size as a single-family house anyway, it's not doing anything there. But it'd probably be ending up on a half acre, they could put on a half acre, uh, since it doesn't state otherwise in here. Because we don't, in the rest of the zoning either, we don't stipulate what is the minimum size acre for the duplexes, but it's just assumed, I think, that it would go on whatever the minimum size acre is for that particular district.
Yeah, we, we need to have clarity there, you know, certainly.
Probably should have, I think we should for all of them, but I'm just bringing them up.
Now, this is a basis and you guys are working with it, and that's a good sign.
That's only why you're here, when you leave. So, we also have, um...
I got to try to be more genuine.
They have a height restriction here, that is different from the forty-five feet that we have in the, in the rest of the zoning, and that is in Vill, Village District Three, which this may be one. It's thirty-five feet unless approved, uh, before the ordinance is enacted, which is the other place out there. So, anybody have any thoughts on that thirty-five feet as opposed to the forty-five feet? I don't, that's pretty high anyways. There are exemptions for steeples and things like that anyways in the zoning.
Close enough there, it has to pass through FAA, NOLI, so...
Well, yeah, it's pretty close to the airport there, so they'll have to go with that, and the glideslope. Thirty, yeah, that's what that was out there. You know, all of the, the other things in here are pretty much the same as they're in that Village Business District One. So, if we go ahead and do this, I'm for combining those districts and having just one Village Business District One and covering those two areas rather than making a whole nother district.
That's why I generated that question too, because I feel the same way.
Okay. So, discussion, uh, discussion in public, you folks are here for this, aren't you?
We are.
The whole, yeah.
Oh.
We're all for it.
We're all for it.
Julian, so you're here for this?
I am.
You are?
Well, I'm speaking about a specific topic, we're supposed to listen so I can be prepared for the next time.
Oh, okay, okay. Mike, do you have any comments on this? Okay, so, what do you think? You know, this isn't a hearing, we're just discussing it, uh, we can nail something down if it looks like it's advisable to do that. I think it is, um, you know, we might wanna just go forward with it. Yes, would you have a different point?
I just have a procedural question now.
Yes.
I'm sorry, to get it's clear.
Yeah, I got it.
Can you decide this amongst yourself or does it have to go somewhere else?
Well, here's how it works, we'll, you know, we're just, this is discussion phase, seeing what's proposed and that type of thing. So then the planning board will probably have it written out again with whatever maybe changed we might have discussed.
Then you have a public hearing.
And, well, the board, board may have another meeting without being a public hearing, just to discuss it again, because at public hearing, you can't change too awfully much, uh, unless, then you have to go back through the process again. So, if the board is in consensus on another meeting, that, that, yeah, that's what should be in there, then we have the public hearing. Public is invited to comment on it, and if the planning board recommends it for the warrant next year, then it goes on the warrant next year. And if the planning board doesn't recommend it, you can put it on with, I think, twenty-five, let's say.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, any, any changes in there that, that we might have missed or anything? You see all the allowable uses in there, what's, what to use, it's pretty reasonable, I think, for, for that area. Jane, you don't look too happy about that.
I think so.
Okay.
Did you guys decide that you agreed with the proposed geography?
Yeah, let's, let's talk about that. You know, how far should it go down? Should it go right down to, you know, we all have this map right here. Continue right on down to, I guess, you're, now you're proposing beyond that, correct? Beyond Page Court?
Just because of the point you made, I'm sorry, we need to go to where that Business District ends in that block. So, I think, I can't really tell from this map exactly.
Yeah. It's down, well, you can tell by this map here.
It looks like it's another...
The problem with that is, wouldn't that include like Frasers and Sons?
It would.
Now, what if they, they retired and went to sell the building, then they'd only be able to sell to a residential person? Then they'd only be able to sell to a residential person to build a house there, right?
No, it would still, they'd be grandfathered in as a business. But if they wanted to change the business, it'd have to abide by the new zoning laws of what could be done in it.
And what they're doing now could continue because they're a retail business.
They are. But if they wanted to change, but if, we're talking about if they sold the building and they wanted to change, something like that.
So you're saying, I'll deal with it.
They'd be restricted to that. Uh, we can think about that, you know, um. Because again, that is restricting. And if we continue it with the business zone all the way down, and that'd be on both sides of the street, that would include Nanotech as well, then, that area there, wouldn't it?
But again, that's.
Oh, yeah, that is, okay, so we wouldn't include those guys. Okay, that's good, then, so.
Yeah, it would affect the plan, very practically.
It would impact the furlong property that's multi-tenant, has the, the airport storage, power's generator.
And that.
And then there's the big red building that's a multi-tenant.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, I don't think we should go down that far. I don't know, those are.
I don't think we should.
Bigger businesses down there, there are residences, residences down there. I don't know, because of the impact. I don't like the.
Yeah, just a couple houses.
The impact of those, pardon me?
Stop at the dam.
The dam, oh, at Wilson Pond Dam, let's have that up there.
So that would be stopping right before.
Right by the red barn? By the sign place there.
The sign place.
I think that'd make more sense, just down there. I think so, so.
The problem also factors into that, you know, the lot size of the area. It's good to say that for the zone, zone in that area, it's, it's comparing the lots and the characteristics. You know, it's a throwing larger lots, because it beats the first.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and they're larger down there, is what you're saying, yeah, yeah. I think that's probably by consensus, then. What else, what else can we discuss here? Uses, it's been pretty well laid out for us, in fact, those guys did all the work for us, pretty much.
That's a lot of good work, yeah.
Actually, Sarah, I think Sarah worked on a lot. You didn't work on it, no?
Just a couple conversations.
At least they advised them that, yes.
Just a couple conversations.
So shall we pursue it, then?
Yeah.
Four members on there, granted. Yeah. Mike, pursue it, yes? I say yes. Richard?
I'd like to see what you're proposing as a combination of the two things. But I'm still, still not happy with the fact that you're changing, or. We have a residential area historically, uh, residential, and we want to change it to a business. It is a business, but we want to maintain the business with modifications. I'd like to see them go, come back with a proposal to make it residential period, with grandfathered existing.
Jane?
I tend to agree with Richard on this.
That is, residential, it should be residential. Victoria, are you still on with us?
I am, and I'm remembering when the sewer was extended to serve, excuse me, the Wilson Pond community. And the idea of that, you know by the night just got, but I, I thought that the idea was to protect Wilson Pond, not to make the area more attractive for business development. It was more to make sure that the existing residences weren't further from the Wilson Pond. So I think it's, I think what Richard is saying is in keeping with the, the reason why we have the sewer service down in thirty-two to begin with.
Yep, that is, you're right. Did you hear what you said about the sewer service being down there to protect Wilson Pond? Yeah, you're correct about that. That is the premises that it went in on. But again, when you put sewer in, it's, it's going to attract, and they want as many users as possible to pay for the, the fees for the plant, so.
So maybe the solution, certainly to adapt what we have as Business District One, and, you know, identifying those areas where those businesses exist here. So you might have two or three dots, or you have four sections right here. And convert the rest to residential. That would be probably very ideal.
I think they call that spot zoning. And we try and keep away from spot zoning, if at all possible. You're talking about individual little, little fragments of a zone here.
Yeah, well, you're talking about certainly a business district down here, right? You know, I, I don't know, maybe between the dinner table and the hall of witness, those could just be grandfathered in, the residential area. I'm not sure if this block here incorporates the quarry. I'm thinking it might.
That is.
Oh, Wickham's.
Oh, you're talking about what Wickham's used to be, or.
So, you know, I mean.
Yeah, that's what that would be.
That's in the commercial district, probably, though.
No, it doesn't have frontage on Route Twelve, not that I can see, anyway.
Yeah, but Wickham's in something else. Yes, Wickham's does, Waste Management does.
It shows a, it shows a separate lot. Take a look at that map that you have right there. It shows a separate lot between the large number two forty-nine and two fifty. And two fifty has the frontage, and two forty-nine does not. Two forty-nine has the.
I know there's a driveway going into them.
Yeah, there, there is a driveway going there, but I'm saying frontage, where, we're talking about frontage. Yeah, if they had frontage on Route Twelve.
Well, if they have a road there, a, a road there already, they'd be grandfathered in to use that that way.
Well, yeah, we aren't talking about that, though. We're talking about zoning it, you know, spot zoning, which.
But you couldn't turn that, take the lot into residential at this point.
I think the, the rear side of the quarry overlaps the Route Twelve Business District.
Oh, yeah, it probably does, yeah, coming back into here.
Because there's a triangle there that overlaps the thirty-two business and the Route Twelve business. I mean, it's all the business district, but.
And the zoning addresses that, as to which one is more stringent, you know, all that. So it could still be done with that, with those still in there, I would say, for those properties.
I mean, you know, there's a lot of houses on Walnut Street, Rose Street, you know, certainly Park Street. I mean, it's all residential. I mean, there's, you know, there's a, a, a vet there, right? But it's still a residential setting. Same thing with the North thirty-two, so, I mean, Richard bring up, you know, a great point, so.
Well, I, ideally, I, I don't, I wouldn't prefer to leave it to a special exception for the things that are allowed by special exception either. Because there's a repair garage or body shop.
No, that's not, that's not going to be allowed in there. None of that is.
None, none of it would be?
No, taking those things out.
It's only a recreational facility conducted as a business inside of a building and a daycare. Those are the only two special exceptions.
Oh, this would be removed, okay. I didn't see that. Absolutely, yeah. I thought that was.
None of that could go in.
I didn't see removed. Fly along.
So, but that is a pretty dense residential area up there. But we're talking about this section here especially, we're talking about being, wait.
That, that area, and then, and these are, these are all homes here, too, except for, you know.
All in there.
I mean, I think it, it feels to me like they like things to do. That's, that's what it feels like to me.
So, if you drew a residential line, where would that be? Would that be this entire, except for this lot here, would that be this entire thing be residential? Is what we're talking about.
Yeah, and even if it's there, grandfathered, yeah, so all this, and then here, except, except for that lot there.
Well, maybe we ought to have a public hearing or some kind of a meeting that all these people are notified and say, this is what we intend to do, what do you think about it? And have, you know, residents, business, whichever, to discuss it. Because it is all residential, but there might be some that say, no, 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 I know I'm living there, but I've got a good piece of business property there, you know, you can get that. So I think that would be a way to handle it. For now, you know, this is, that's nothing fine, either. It's just a public hearing, getting public input from it.
Yeah. Could always hold back on.
On what you have. On what you've got there, yeah.
And be, which I think you are looking to probably revise anyway, based on the discussion you had today.
Yeah, maybe a good idea.
I think before we make any decision to which direction to go, we should have the public input. Really important.
Yeah.
When would you like that to be scheduled for?
Let's see, it can't be our next meeting, because that's too soon.
Too soon, yeah.
So we're getting pretty busy in the next call meetings, correct?
Um, the end of the month. Well, we don't have anything in yet, but we're expecting definitely two, well, we don't have it, but we're definitely expecting two cycle interviews for large projects, and possibly three. I have no idea what's coming forward beginning of September. Because it really depends if what's expected in August comes through and finishes.
And I hate to, this could be a big meeting. I hate to have people waiting around and then finally.
You could call a special meeting.
That's an idea.
That's an idea, too.
Yeah, we could call a special meeting. And just have that on the agenda. That would be a very.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
It seems to me, if I were a, a property owner, it'd be very confusing unless you actually had proposals in front of you to consider.
Mm-hmm, you're right.
Rather than just discussion, general discussion. We go in all sorts of places. You could have Mark's proposal, you could have another proposal that suggests residential, you know, whatever. But clearly, something that states what we're going to discuss, rather than just a.
You're right, you're right. We could refine it.
Asking for chaos, yeah.
Yeah, we are. But we could refine that into Village Business One.
Right.
Find everything here into that.
Right.
With as it's drawn out here, and then the other proposal would be, we'll say, residential from the whole entire thing. And just see what happens there, two choices like that.
They would look at, right, they would actually have something to look at.
Then, of course, the existing.
And existing, yeah, business as it is now, you're right, yeah. So, if we had a special meeting, do we want to do that?
Yes. Yeah, I think it's the best way out of this.
I think so, it's addressing just that, that one meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Next thing is the date. What can we do? So we need, we need, what, two weeks for, to notify everyone? And I'd like everyone to get a letter that it's happening. Can we do that? Is that too much of a, that to do?
Yeah, we can.
How do we do that?
Service.
No.
That's a lot, that's a lot of people.
I, I'm trying to determine if that would need to be a certified mailing, or if we can do that first class. So ordinarily, like, when you get to the next step, and you actually know what's being proposed, and you're doing the public hearings for the actual zoning amendments, that's just first-class mail. Because we have about seventy properties that are impacted here. And if it's a certified mailing, I'd have to run it by the TA.
Yeah. I would think first class would be fine for that, you know.
I just have to make sure legally we can do that with a public hearing.
Okay.
For this. I think we started again, but I've just got to.
We don't need to call a public hearing then.
We could call it a listening session or something.
Special meeting, planning board, for that area up there, and forget about being a public hearing.
Perfect, first class.
Are you, are you sort of like an action group? Are you representing basically an action group? Would you consider that your position?
I think he's going to ask something else after that.
Yeah, no, because what I'm, what I'm thinking is, is the neighborhood of you interacting with the people within the neighborhood that is going to affect. And make them aware, you know, that this is coming, coming up.
And actually being able to give their opinion.
Yeah, it's, it's not a petition type of thing, but, so each.
I, I have, have contacts.
Yeah, you know, if each of you did like ten homes.
Well, we should still put out as a first.
Yeah, well, yes, no, no, I'm saying, but I mean.
So everybody gets a letter, and then you can spread the word, and we'll have a meeting probably upstairs for that one.
Do you want to try to do that in August or September?
Let's see, what do we do for a date here?
Because you have a regular meeting on the tenth.
And the twenty-fourth.
And the twenty-fourth, and the twenty-fourth, you know, that's out. But there's time to notice it for the seventeenth. I haven't, I don't know if the Wickham Hall is available. We have to double-check that. And I don't know if Reverend's available. We have to double-check that.
When are you available for a special meeting?
It depends. Wednesday nights, well, the selectmen are only meeting three Wednesday nights during August. They're not meeting on the ninth and the twenty-third, I think. Forgive me if I don't have a calendar in my head. But you could probably use one of those nights, a Wednesday night.
The thirty, the thirty-first would be going into Liberty Day weekend, so that would be, that would not be a good.
You have, how about August the twenty-third? I think they're not meeting, that's a Wednesday night, and they would normally have this room.
Yeah, and it's, so, might not be, being used that night.
Right.
Normally would not be.
Oh, you won't even be here.
I won't even be here.
No, you won't be here.
But I'll be putting the notices together.
Well, you're already invited out, so.
So the twenty-third.
I believe it's a Wednesday.
It is.
Yes, it is.
So that's the one they're not meeting.
So let's tentatively say that, the twenty-third of August. To have a special meeting of the planning board.
Let me just open this to make sure.
For discussions.
Yeah, discussing rezoning the North Swansea corridor, maybe.
I, I see that data is being marked on the Wickham Hall calendar.
Oh, you do?
I would confirm that, just to make sure it's not, oh, but, yeah.
Well, every Wednesday is marked for select board, even if they're not meeting.
Yeah, and eight twenty-three, now, they decided last night they would not be meeting on the twenty-third or the ninth. If they have to, they come together and sign some.
The consent agenda.
It's, it's, they just don't have a formal meeting. So the twenty-third is free, if that's what you want to use it for.
I, twenty-third, I think, can work pretty well.
Yep. Gives us advance notice, so we can just redo the stuff with, finally questions in our office.
Yeah, well, let's see. We need to put together, you know, the modifications that we're going, I can work on that. Modifications we're going to do for that business, the Village Business One, to consolidate it. So we're to incorporate everything that these guys are doing. So that's the one proposal there. The other proposal, residential, maybe the whole way. And the third, as it is, and then whatever comes up for that. So there'll be three possibilities there. Yes?
Ideally, you would get from this public meeting which proposal you would want to go with. I guess my question is, would you ever put more than one proposal forward on the ballot?
No. Well, yeah, you can. I mean, yeah, we could, the planning board probably wouldn't. But if you had one that was on under petitions, then there would be more than one.
Yeah, if they both pass, you're not kind of a problem.
I see the message, because, you know, ideally, I know it's an essential idea, but if it's not passed, then, then, whatever. I would try and understand, thank you.
So twenty-third, six o'clock, Wickham Hall, we'll have that meeting. It'll be noticed, and mailings will be sent out, first-class mail. And we'll discuss the, as many people as possible, and see what the consensus is on it.
Do you need anything more, anything for me to work?
No, we got your, if you have anything to add in, you can just pass it in the land use office, and we can see it prior to that.
I'm always available.
Otherwise, just to spread the word and talk it over, what we're talking about this evening, because there are only three of you here. Talk, talk it out.
Well, obviously, then, you know.
No, just say what was discussed.
I wanted to be, you know, a good discussion, not a lot of, coming from all which way, which we don't know.
Appreciate that, yeah, thank you. So, yeah, to spread the word of what we discussed tonight.
Will do.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Just to be clear for the minutes, would you also be in a proposed residential district?
Yep, I will. Now, that brings us to zoning amendments discussion. Okay, then. So we have, we have a few more in here, in our packet there, and.
So ideally, what I'm hoping you guys will do with this list is determine if there's anything you absolutely don't want, so it can be crossed off for future or never.
Okay, so.
As, as the first step of it.
Yeah.
You're, are you requesting that right now, if you want?
Let's do it, let's do it right now. Let's do it this evening, we can do it.
If, if, if you can actually determine that, which may not be possible, but.
Which list are you referring to, the one where?
It's the very last page of the packet.
Yeah, okay, I, I didn't know if you were referring back to.
Oh, right.
This.
Oh, no. So just the bulleted items are things that either we've noticed in the land use office have come in for a lot of variances, or things that have been discussed by the board, or inconsistencies that we have found in the ordinance that has exists, or things to help us be more in line with the master plan.
And what's the rationale of removing the self-storage facilities in Business District? Or does it mean to move it up to a communitys? Or does it take it out entirely?
Take it out entirely, so it could maybe be an accessory use in the Business District. Just because so much of the, the land that could be used for businesses that produce jobs or contribute to the economy in some way, it's, it's all being turned into self-storage.
Yeah, it is. You're right.
And I remember a board member mentioning it this year, that it should be a consideration.
I don't recall off the top of my head. Is that the only place that we allow it in the Business District?
Um, it's also allowed in the Commercial Industrial District, and that is a use-by-right. And self-storage isn't allowed in the industrial park, but I believe a storage facility is, so there's possible-
Same thing.
Am I wrong about that? Am I misremembering that?
I don't recall.
I think you're correct on that. Well, let's, let's go from the top a little bit while we're all here.
Yeah.
So we have reducing the wetland setback septic systems from one-twenty-five feet to seventy-five feet, matching the state standards. And we've been one-twenty-five for a long time.
And I suggest that we keep it, especially after the recent rains and flooding into certain areas.
So you have to keep it one-twenty-five?
I agree.
Fine, I think.
I agree with that one.
Okay.
Okay, so next that one?
I can take it. Next that one.
You're gonna get pushback from Conservation Commission on that one, too.
If we shorten it.
Well, I, I'm on that commission, and I absolutely think we should not shorten it.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And especially after all the rains. And I remember when that went in, and that was a big argument.
But that's what I was saying. That commission's not gonna like that.
But the soil, you know, we want to protect the soil and to put septic and leach closer to wetlands, and wetlands are obviously growing. They're growing in my front yard.
My septic system for a lot of it, where they do feed the seep water. This, this provision has cost homeowners thousands and thousands of dollars. It's cost, it's cost projects to not even, homes to not even be able to be built.
Good.
It's, it's, it's good. It goes every two, three times a year.
Is it? That many? Yeah, like that? Really?
Yeah, it's really good. It's, it's, it, it, the problem I have with the whole thing from my perspective is, is where is the science? I read the report that, that that person made. It's a report that one person made. And it's got a lot of, you know, different things in, in, you know, bibliography and all, mid-offering and all the rest of that stuff. Yet I can't say it's doing anything.
Well, speaking from my background, it isn't. Seventy-five feet is plenty filtration for a leach field. You're taking solids out with a septic tank. You're only leaching the gray water out through the leach field there. And one of the methods used is what's called a trickling filter. I think Winchester used to have one. Anyways, they have a bed of sand between six and eight inches deep, and they put the water right out on that, let it filter down through, pump that water back out, chlorinate it, put it in the river, and whatever solids on top, they rake it off and take care of it. Anyway, that's, that's what that's called. But seventy-five feet is, is a fair amount. In, in our soils, we have sandy soils here, really pretty well-greased soils. So it's probably gonna go down pretty far. Not, not gonna leach out into the wetlands there, in my opinion anyways. I know the Conservation Commission, you know, the further, further the better, but they haven't worked in the field like I've worked in the field. It's, it's not that dangerous of a field, I mean, of what's going on. There are a lot of septic systems out there in good working order. Some failing. And when they fail, they have to be fixed. You know, it's, it's a health thing right there. But Mike makes a good point about houses not being able to go in. I didn't realize that they were giving variances and stuff for that. I didn't-
Almost, almost, not everyone, but, but so many projects, multiples. We put out one-hundred-and-fifty per m square a year. Obviously, they're not all burning houses. These people really go through some serious gyrations to get that extra few feet, and it can-
Yeah.
It's, I just consider it to be owners, I don't, I, I personally haven't been convinced that there's a great benefit to it. But, man, you can eat that post again, see my water. All the tanks and all that stuff don't have to be sealed. The technology in these systems has changed greatly from when this was passed. I mean, stone pipe is old, rules supreme, because it's bulletproof and it works so well, especially in a place like Swansea. I just, I just see that this, it makes, it makes it harder on people than I think it needs to. And I know the, the septic designers and everybody suffers with it, and I just, I just look at houses are so expensive as it is. I just, I don't see why this-
Well, they're expensive and far and thin between. You know, we're supposed to be allowing multifamily in here, to give people a place to live, you know, low income or however it happens to work out. But we're trying to lure the wrong people in there, you know. There's nothing against them, but you don't have the same pride of ownership when you're renting an apartment like down here that you do on your, on your house. First-hand house or whatever the heck happens to be. We should be encouraging small, you know, smaller lots maybe, but, but individual houses, inexpensive, cheaper houses, however you want to call it. We should be encouraging that. And if this is the way to do it, I'd be all for that.
At the same time, I, I remember years ago, you were around and I, I think we were the only ones that are still here. But I remember someone saying, "Oh, it's wonderful to have people come in and say how easy it is to build in Swansea." It's so different from other towns. They're so easy. I'm, I don't think we need to make it easy. If, if there's a compromise that would help, okay, but I, I don't see... And I don't, I don't mean to, I don't want anybody to take it personally, but I just, we need to protect our town. We're close to Keene, and Keene uses us sometimes as the pitfall. And I've been around long enough to see that happen, too. And I, I just, I, I don't want to be the easiest town in the county for people to build their house or build their multifamily. Yes, we need housing, but it doesn't all have to be in Swansea.
Wouldn't you like to see some of these lots be used up by a single-family home versus a multifamily home, though?
Yeah, but I think that we can draw a line. I, I, I don't know how many of them are not built on because they're close to a wetland. But we do have a lot of wetlands, so that could pose a problem. At the same time, we don't have one wetland that we shouldn't care about. And we have aquifers that we really need to care more about than we have in, on the books now.
But that doesn't mean we don't care about the wetlands if we're in favor of using the seventy-five feet with the sepiuses. You know, they-
Put out a septic in the wetland. I guess the thing that, that makes me the happiest to work in this community is what I saw tonight. I'm so glad to see someone actually come with a viable
Yes.
solution to something. I nearly came here with an answer. Mr. Salera came here with, he was prepared to come up with a solution, not just a complaint. And you guys heard him out. And every year, you guys put a bunch of warrants on the area, which I think is fantastic. Because no matter what you decide at that meeting, no matter what color that map becomes, you guys next year will be willing to hear changes in color again. As you should be. All these documents are living documents. All I'm saying is, is I would appreciate if the board would at least give this, the chance. Again, as your new qualified, you know, half-time planner, would give you the, the opportunity to get together with, with County. I'm not saying my opinion doesn't matter or that they're even wrong necessarily, but to just say no to it, not to talk about it, when last year we were pretty prepared to just go ahead and let's get rid of it. That's a big swing. We gave County here if you come up with, with the rationale for keeping it. So let's share what the rationale is. So let's have that conversation. You guys, you guys are a creative conversation, which is wonderful.
Let's do it. We'll ask the-
Well, I respect what Scott said about his knowledge from his work in the field related, and I respect that. At the same time, I remember what a harangue we had about before, but I do think, Scott, wasn't that around Wilson Pond area? Didn't that have something about the setbacks? Didn't it have something to do with something on Wilson Pond?
I, I don't recall really specifically what we're talking about there. Really? Yeah, well, we've had a lot of those, though.
No, this one was especially horrible. Ask Larry Crowder.
It is, you know, the, the state encourages plants like ours down here, which is a lagoon system. It's not activated sludge like Keene is. They encourage you to land-apply the, the water, which would be leach water in this case here. You know, the, the lagoons out there are like a septic tank. All the solids settle and the microorganisms consume them, and then the water drains off the top. That's what a leach field takes, the water there. And they encourage you to land-apply it, if you can anywhere. We've tried it down here to get Barwell, I think that, that's who owns that field still, to allow us to do that. But anytime you hear something about septic, everybody's just scared, you know, scared of it and afraid of it. No, we aren't gonna be doing that. And, but-
But they are no problem taking a big pile of house-
Cat. It's, it's that far from the river.
Exactly.
Untreated. Cars is treated.
Stuart and John.
So it is. Yes, Stuart and John. Victoria, you, you saying something?
Question for Mike Jasmine, because Mike, you're talking about this decision being data-driven, and I wonder if you could supply us with some, you know, ideally a list, perhaps, of applications for single-family homes that suffer because of the, the existing setbacks and, you know, maybe show us where they are in a tax parcel map so that we can visualize that. Because right now, we're just looking at, you know, prior practice up against your end-to-end experience.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
Maybe with data against data.
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
Okay, you don't mind doing that?
No.
All right.
It's a perfectly fair, fair and reasonable request.
Okay. Well, I don't-
But keeping that to be discussed.
Let's discuss it. Let's keep it open for discussion, because there, there are two sides to it all over the place. I think it's worth discussing again. Everybody else?
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. Do you feel it's worth discussing again? Jane?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Victoria?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Do we do this and remove self-storage facilities permitted by special exception in the Business District? I think you heard Sarah discuss it and said that, and she has a good point. It's taking up valuable business land, you know, for just a storage facility, like right on Route Ten there. That's nice business property there. We've got those storage facilities there and there.
No, wouldn't go there, yeah.
Again, it's property rights, each to their own, but, yeah, it might be good just to give that a try to see if it goes through, just to, just to limit it for a while. We could always put it back on if there's a lot of petition or-
It's just a pause.
Yeah, a pause. So let's keep that one on there, too. Okay. Add retail EV charging stations as a use-by-right or special exception in the Business District and Commercial Industrial District. Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with adding it as a right. If someone wants to put in a charging station, fine. It should be allowed, become an allowable use. You know, it's-
The only thing we're looking at those is you put a charging station up and you're gonna take two parking spaces away. So when they come in with their plan, they're gonna have to make up those two parking spaces.
That's right. They'll have to deal with.
Well, and this is-
Why, why would you have to?
Retail.
Because you have to have a transformer along with the charging station or so.
That's, it would be included within the unit. If you look at-
Not the commercial ones that I've seen.
The ones that I've seen are basically stand, standalone units. They have been connected underground, and there's no transformer anywhere near it.
I think you're both right, actually. Where we are, the power supplies that we have here, we are gonna have to have a transformer, but probably only one, depending on how many you put in.
Right.
So along with the EV charging thing, you're gonna maybe want to talk about a number of units, perhaps, or something like that.
So you're like-
Yeah.
I think we have to be aware of the parking plan, because it will change the footage you have for your parking plan, because we know that parking stalls have to be so big, put so many in, then how's that going to affect it? We just have to be aware.
The developer, you know, developer wants to put them in there, they will configure-
Well, they have to put it in there, but we have to be aware of what's going on.
We will, as a planning board, as we see it, you know, if there's none of parking, obviously, we'd have to move it around and stuff there. But if they feel that an EV station is gonna help their business, why not have an allowable use for them to do so?
I don't have a problem.
But especially because some of the dealerships and some of their businesses are going to be required to put them in by their, like Ford is gonna make that effort, put some in.
Yeah, Ford's already got one.
They're not gonna have an option.
Ford's got one.
I would suggest also that any new projects that we encourage, the developer to include those kinds of, especially like in Flatley, where it's market, they're going to be electric vehicles, and those people there are going to own those.
And bring us to the next, to the next bullet point.
Before we go to that, could I just ask you guys for a clarification? Do you want that to be special exception or use-by-right? On the previous one, retail EV charging?
I wouldn't have a problem with it by right.
I, I think so, too.
By right.
Just so I can-
Anybody else by rights? Brandon, by right?
Sure.
By right, but should we put in some sort of specifics as to what would be acceptable?
You mean how many, number?
Well, I don't know about so how many, but design, where they would be located, et cetera, like that.
We can handle that right at the site plan. You know, if we feel they're in a bad location, we can suggest, no, you shouldn't go there right next to that.
As long as we have the ability to modify what they may present to us, as far as that is concerned.
It's allowable use, but we don't want to tie our hands with saying, well, going here and there and everywhere. We want to be able to say, well-
Yeah, because each one of it is. Because land configurations are so different around.
Yeah, so.
My other, the other thing is like on Plainview, those landscaped pods at the end of the parking, yeah, islands. You could include your transformer inside that and hide it.
Good, good. Do it. Case by case, basically.
Take away green spaces.
No, not really.
No, no, no. We plant all around it.
The transformer's not, doesn't have to, would have to be that large, I don't believe.
Well, if we get one in, we'll decide it. We'll let the developer say how they want to do it, and we'll look at it and see if it works or not. Just allowable use by right, right? That's what we're talking about. No special exception?
Okay.
Okay. Next bullet point is add requirement for EV infrastructure in parking ordinance for multifamily development. That one I have a problem with, only because if, if it's gonna work, the developer will want to put it in there, because it'll, it'll be good for the development. You know, rather than the planning board saying, "You have to put six EV chargers here and two there," however it is, or the full charge ones, you know, it gets into a whole, a whole thing about it. If that developer, if it's gonna be feasible for them to do it, and it's gonna draw their customers or, or their tenants or something like that, they'll do it.
Marketing-driven.
Or they'll do it afterwards, come in with the changing plan, whatever. They'll do it.
We should not make it require-
I don't think we should force them, you know. We, we force too many things, you know, we're gonna draw on simply. But that's only my, we want to know what the board, that's only my opinion on it.
I, I, I agree, a hundred percent.
The market will drive the need.
Market drive. Richard?
I don't know if we want to be proactive in-
To require them?
Require. My only, my reasoning is there's a federal mandate coming that X amount of vehicles have to be electric by a certain date.
That's gonna get killed in this presidential election.
Regardless of whether it gets killed or not.
No, but anyways, so why not have something in place ahead of time?
I'm gonna get ahead of the curve on that. Again, we, we are allowing it as an allowable use. So as a planning board, as it comes in like that, if it's required for the developer to do it, the planning board will see at that time. And again, go over it then.
I think the largest dilemma with mandating it, aside from philosophical, just not wanting to have too many rules, is, is, you know, if you've got so many ADA, ADA units, so many regular units, now you gotta figure where they are. Well, if that, you know, if that person who's got the electric car lives on the backside of the building, that's not really all that helpful. So I, I, I also believe that the market is gonna, is gonna solve this, because they're gonna, I think Scott's point is a good one. Two ways. A, they're gonna do it because they have to, and it's, it's what people are gonna expect. I wouldn't be at all surprised, actually, if one or both of these developers don't come back in and want to do it now, maybe even have to talk to the government about it, but frankly.
Good.
And the, the second part of that is gonna be that you're gonna also want to think about, you're also gonna start seeing onsite power generation going as well. Because the grid is gonna have a hard time keeping up with these chargers, especially the rapid chargers. So they're gonna have to incorporate at some point onsite generation of power. It's gonna be a big deal. Micro power's gonna be a big deal.
Did you, I'm sorry.
I, I agree with, I was agreeing with Mike. I do. I, I agree with, I was agreeing with Mike. I do.
All right, so.
Did you happen to get the email from Sarah concerning this in, in Stratford?
I don't think so, no, I don't remember.
I sent it out at five o'clock tonight, because it just come into me, so I forwarded it to you guys.
Their planning board is requiring X amount of, uh, charging stations per.
Square footage or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, it's, I believe it's square footage or parking footage.
I didn't even have time to fully review it. It just came in, and I thought it would be helpful to have more information.
For what it's
But again, that's Stratford, it's not us.
No.
For what it's, for what it's been needing certain changes to. By hope, it's going to have to be in the
They'll come along, but, you know, addressing it on a case-by-case basis with the planning board, I think is a good way to do it. Just individual buildings going up.
I really do think that if a developer is building and he's got, they're going to see that they need these stations.
Yeah.
And they will be putting them in. I don't think we need to require that they put them in. I think they will put some in.
So let's, let's get right out. See, amend rear lot ordinance to include provision for ADUs, DADUs as written, conflict, conflicts with the RSA six seven four seven two one, and it certainly does, so I'm all for that one there. Because we, we allow single-family residents on a rear lot, only one residence. And, but we don't say anything about adding an ADU onto that thing there. But we allow it every other place. It should be allowed in a rear lot as well, you know, I think anyways. Anybody else? You jumped in too when we were discussing this there.
The RSA says anywhere that you allow a single family, you have to allow ADUs.
Oh, well, in that case, that's a no.
You don't necessarily have to allow a DADU there, um, if you want to split hairs. But I leave that to you guys, but you, you do have to allow the ADUs there.
Okay, so.
So I was thinking you could just point to, um, that you have a DADU.
Yeah, you worded back here, we'll get to that, but the way it's worded, I think it's fine in there.
Okay.
So we'll have to check. Okay, duplex permitted by right for existing structures in the business district. Um, I guess we didn't allow that before?
So that was disallowed, um, in the twenty twenty-two warrant, when the density changes went into effect. You can no longer have a new duplex in the business district. And we know that the business district overlaps where residences currently are. And we have had, um, you know, some folks that don't want an ADU, they want a duplex. They want to turn their existing house into a duplex, and they're having to come forward with variances that are failing.
Hmm.
So.
And it would work better for those residential neighborhoods, because otherwise, if they couldn't put the duplex up, they might put in a gas station there.
And, and having it as, you know, existing structure rather than use by right, it's,
Yeah.
it's sort of like training wheels, testing duplexes in the business district.
Let's keep that one on there then, that sounds like a good idea. Uh, one other.
That kind of lends itself to what we were discussing before, in our Swansea.
It's, um, what it does, and so does this one here. Another one that I just tend in here is, uh, to address the density for multifamily in Village Business District Two and actually other districts as well, I think. I don't think we put a density on there.
There's no limit. It's only limited by their ability to provide parking.
Oh, yeah, that would limit it right there, parking, so. Let's see, do we want to?
Do you say define density where now?
Uh, it's in, it's for the multifamily, uh, density for multifamily in Village Business District Two. So it's defined by parking is what Sarah just said, and I remember that before we discussed that, so. So that's defined by parking. If you can't get enough parking there, you can't.
Yeah, Village Two is just the middle.
Yeah. And this is just a small thing, but I think we should put the description of Village District Two, uh, which is in section two on our zoning, uh, move it to page two, because it's like at the end. So we go discussing what Village Business District One is, and we say what, um, just regular business is. Then it gets way to the end, and we find Bill, Business District Two. So we should put them all together.
Hmm.
All right, I have to know this.
Do you want it there?
Uh, move it to, uh, to page two with the other descriptions
With the others.
of businesses.
Like if you're searching for information, it kind of gets lost.
It's way at the end, yeah.
Do you still want to address the density for Business Two, though?
Uh, density for the multifamily?
Yeah.
I don't think so, because you're right, the parking takes care of it.
Okay.
Okay, we have, then we have just the wording on the special exception or special provisions. Um, I guess we're going to, we're going to discuss that more at some point about the seventy-five foot as opposed to one twenty-five foot. Uh, so I guess we can skip by that one. Um, on, let's see. And, yeah, this is written in for the business district, uh, adding in retail electric vehicle charging station as a, a use. Let's see, we wanted to put it not as special exception, all right, isn't it?
Right, I think you
Allowable use.
By right, so I'll rewrite that.
Yeah, no special exception there, okay. And the number five, uh, one-family dwelling, uh, two-family dwelling manufactured housing zone established prior to the adoption of the sub-paragraph. Oh, yeah, talks about the one-family to two-family dwelling conversions that do not change. The footprint of the existing one-family dwelling shall be considered a permitted use in the business district. I think that should be a new letter T under the, under that section there, to clarify a little. Instead of putting it at the end of that paragraph, if we put it down as letter T. And anybody, I don't know, I'm just saying this out. You guys just jump right in here, whatever, this is just my thought about it. And, yeah, and the rear lot one with the accessory dwelling unit, that seems good to me. And the number Q, our letter Q there, I think we agreed that we weren't going to force any of that business on people. Right, so we just cross out and add that multi-family dwellings and all that with the EV. Okay. And that about sums it up for now. So we'll have that special meeting on that rezoning there coming up twenty-third. And I've gone over this, and I'll go over it again, just put a few tweaks here and there, and I'll work with, actually, I'll work with you guys over there on that. Right, and we'll just come up with something for that meeting, rewording a few things here and there, and what's proposed, we'll do it that way. Okay?
I have two things under the other business that aren't really listed.
I know, you did list it in there, I just missed.
I listed one of them, just on the chair's agenda.
Yeah.
I guess I handbubbed you one in.
Okay, so we have other business, and that is planning board representative for CIPC. And we stuck
No.
Yeah. Every year, we've stuck Jane with that, sometimes Jane will
I've been practicing that all day.
So we aren't going to stick Jane with that. She's been on it long enough.
Oh, long enough.
Any volunteers for that position, that's on the, right, like I said, the CIP.
How often do they meet and what days?
I don't know.
Oh, I think Michael would be perfect on that.
If, if you want, well, that's fine. If nobody wants to do it, I'll do it. I haven't done, I've been on the board, that one for, you know, quite a while ago.
I'll do it for you, maybe I'll learn something.
You want to do it? Okay, then we will nominate, somebody needs to nominate, Michael York, before he changes his mind.
I nominate Michael York.
Okay. Second, the nomination by Brandon to nominate Michael York, seconded by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, okay, you have a new position. One more thing.
And
Thank you for working happy.
This last thing is
Thank you.
because you guys like talking about Market Basket so much.
I know. Brought us the sandwich.
Uh, to you.
Dinner, are there more? I think there's, there's three.
So there are two separate handouts.
There's another one there. You guys have this one here. Yeah, there are, there are these two different ones here.
So you have another one of those, and then, uh, four. You want one of those pages that you just sent them?
Uh, this is your Douglas.
Okay, so everybody should have
Yeah, yeah.
two sheets. One sheet is showing, um, what was approved for Market Basket back in two thousand and eleven, because they were going to do a phased development.
Uh huh.
And the second sheet is, um, sort of existing conditions slash their paving. So they never, they never did fully develop the southern section of the site. Most of it is a gravel parking lot right now, and there's gravel exit that goes out to Route ten. They want to pave the gravel parking lot partially. So the section that they typically use, if you go to the grocery store, you'll see a couple lines of cars parked over there. They want to pave that area and pave the access to Route ten. And what they want to know, so just to resurface an unpaved area, they don't need to come in for site plan review. But the landscaping changes a little bit in this plan, so the question is, what do you want from them, if anything?
Well, and this, this is their proposed landscaping right here, is that correct?
Yes.
That piece right there is their proposed landscaping, and it looks like a small horseshoe or something, right?
Yeah.
So right now, there is a green mound in that area, and this sort of expands.
It's their landscaping.
Yeah, this is what they want to do.
And that would be green in that part, that grass there, we're thinking.
I, I assume so. I mean, I'm kind of imagining that they would actually put in the plantings that were listed on their original plan, or you could request that, and this was sort of a
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess the, the bigger question is, will this require a public hearing? Or is this a minor modification that they can come in and have a dialogue with the board?
Isn't that, that's all the landscaping there?
It's not paved, oh, is that landscaping there now?
Yeah, because we drive around here all the time.
There is some landscaping there, I just can't remember the full extent of it.
I don't know the extent of it, but it is, it is landscaping.
So that is there now.
But it might not be very real.
And there, you know, if you, if you look really closely, you can see hash marks kind of underneath the landscaping area, so you can see the footprint of what is there right now. So this is a little bit more
Right.
than what's currently there. And I would imagine, since they're paving it, they're proposing curving the landscaping, because right now, I, I think it's just a mound.
Yeah.
And then they're going to pave another exit out of there?
Yeah, so they have a gravel exit right now, and they'd like to pave that.
No, they're going to pave this, this is the one that shows what they're going to do?
That's what they'd like to do, yes.
And then out here?
Yep.
Okay.
And then the, the remainder of the gravel area would remain gravel. You know, yeah.
Okay, what's all this stuff? I mean.
Oh, that's, that's what we approved. That's what we approved with the new building, it was, isn't there, but that was a, a separate building they had proposed to add earlier.
Okay, this is what they were going to do, this is what, okay.
They didn't build it yet, anyway.
We would need to see drainage.
Well, the drainage, um, so the whole site was designed
We've seen the drainage.
What, yeah, you've seen the drainage on this, and the state views, um, pavement the same as gravel for impervious surface and drainage, you know, the AOT. AOT looks at it that way, and they are already, um, working with the state, letting them know that they're updating, because they'll have to amend their AOT permit. Or that, that's what they imagine, so they're having that conversation with DES to see what they'll require.
I think it's a minor modification, since everything, the flow and everything remains the same, except pavement on there, but everything else remains the same. We could hit them up on the landscaping part ourselves. I was just looking to see what is the flow, and it might be not in our, you know, we, we redid that parking, correct? On the plan?
Um, in the site plan regs?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Was it the wrong document?
Yeah, I'm in the wrong one. That's, I've got my brand new one here, so.
Right here.
Yeah.
Oh, not there, here it is.
There we are, brand new one here.
Yeah, so in the site plan regs, you guys can't restrict them or require them to come in to ask if they can pave. So, I mean, I really think the only thing that's within your purview is if you want to discuss the way that it's landscaped, because, um,
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's the only way we can get them in here, probably. We probably just ought to just to make sure that we have a conversation about it there.
Okay, I can let them know, definitely.
Yeah, and we'll just discuss that at that point there.
Just on what's the landscape of plan for you, Dan?
Yeah, see what they propose. Although they will need a new, a new copy of those site plans, we are for that.
Okay.
Everyone in agreement on that?
Mm-hmm.
So it's a motion that, uh, this is a minor site plan, uh, change, and that they do not need a public hearing.
I'm making a motion.
Motion by Brandon, that a minor site plan change, not require a public hearing, or not come in, is there a second?
What is the landscaping part of it?
Uh, require them to come in on the landscaping part of it. We can't require them to come in on the paving part of it.
So we're, we're making a motion on the paving now?
Uh, no, we're making a motion that, that they need to come in, that they will come in, but not with a public hearing. They don't have to go through a whole site plan review just for that.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jane. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so one of our next meetings, we'll be in, in that proposal, and like, we've been looking at their drawings for a while anyways. I'm trying to emphasize, we should be pretty familiar with those. Okay, I think that's about it. Have I forgotten anything, Sarah?
Not that
Nothing.
that I am remembering.
Anybody else have anything for this meeting? Anybody in the peanut gallery over there? Okay.
Uh, the peanut gallery just wants to make sure that we're under scans. My big tops are good.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I'm going to have a motion as a resolution to thank Sarah for her loyalty and, uh, great help that she gave her.
She's been one of the best I've worked with, and I've been on the work for a long time.
That's right.
I've only worked for three of them, but she is the best I've seen.
It's been a pleasure working with you guys.
Feeling definitely mutual.
We still don't know where this is.
I'm not telling.
You'll never know.
Yeah, well, if it's in the area, maybe I'll visit every one of them.
Well, we're happy for you anyway, so.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Yeah, Jane makes that motion.
Jane?
And I'll second.
Okay, I will. That'll do. I move that we adjourn.
I second.
Motion to be adjourned, motion to adjourn by Jane, seconded by Brandon, all those in favor?